We're just gonna take one minute and I'm gonna find something that I need.
Yeah, okay. Do they know the recipe? I'm reading it.
Oh.
I'm messaging. I don't have your phone. It's okay. I'll just read it.
What's that?
The goose.
So funny. This is Jim be the first one to try it. It works. Fortunately, it's just seltzer water.
Should've had that in jeans last night.
Where'd they get here from the?
Yeah, from the website. The last one.
So we have to read this whole thing?
Oh, yeah. Her changing you. Yeah, I know about that stuff and I'm not gonna question you, but that's just not right.
When you're reading it too, I'm just gonna like randomly cough and dirty off.
I appreciate that. How I'm blind as a bat. I could see it.
Marson. Somebody sent me something.
So did you detain this guy or was it?
I think it was a sheriff.
And it's getting at the Gantin?
All right, this is the city council regular meeting. We're in Mon County Commission Chambers, two forty-three High Street, um, on the second floor. It's Tuesday, October third at seven P. M., a little bit after, quarter after. Um, we're calling the meeting to order and asking the clerk to please call the roll.
Yes, Deputy Mayor.
Abu Ghanim?
Present.
Bill Kowicki?
Here.
Wheezy Michael?
Present.
Danielle Trumbull?
Here.
Dave Harsh Parker?
Here.
Brian Butcher?
Here.
Mayor Celine?
Here. Uh, we're gonna stand for the pledge. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic where it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Now, we're on to approval of the minutes. We have, um, four sets of minutes this evening. September nineteenth, uh, twenty twenty-three special meeting minutes, September nineteenth, twenty twenty-three regular meeting minutes, September twenty-sixth, twenty three, twenty twenty-three special meeting minutes, September twenty-sixth, twenty twenty-three committee of the whole meeting minutes. Um, if there are no additions or corrections, then we will pass them by acclamation if everyone agrees. And now we're on to correspondence and we start with Fire Prevention Month and Fire Marshal, uh, Andrew Dotson. Appreciate you coming.
Thank you for having me. Um, just for the record, I'm Deputy Fire Marshal, the Fire Marshal is Captain Jason Quinn.
Ah.
We do look.
Well, you know.
Just be sure we get that.
We just added a little there.
I appreciate you guys inviting me to come and speak and the purpose of me being here is share a little data with you guys, but also to tell you what outreaches we're doing within the community to, to be sure this is a fire safe area. Um, NFPA identifies a theme every year for Fire Prevention Month and this year's theme is Cooking Safety Starts With You. Uh, and I've compiled some data here that we'll go over and it will show that it's really important that we, we take good steps while we're in the kitchen area, uh, cause that is the number one cause of fires in the United States. They originate in the kitchen area. So, uh, a high hazard area, we need to make sure we're paying attention to what we're doing. Uh, Fire Departments in the United States in two thousand twenty-one responded to one point three five million fires. Those fires took the lives of three thousand eight hundred civilians. Sixteen point nine billion dollars in damages and almost fifteen thousand injuries. And that's about par for the course depending on the year you pull your statistics from. Uh, so we're really proactive trying to teach fire safety because it really does impact us every second of our lives, even though we don't always think about it. Um, seventy-five percent of those three thousand eight hundred civilian deaths, they happened in people's homes and their residences where we feel the safest, but we're also the most vulnerable. So we have to be sure we're taking really good steps to ensure that we're, we're living a fire safe life. Uh, sixty percent of those fire fatalities happened in a home where there was no working smoke alarm. A fifteen dollar smoke alarm potentially could have prevented thousands of lives being lost. So one of the biggest things we push with our public education is the importance of those smoke alarms. And I'll talk a little bit about our outreaches with that. Uh, but I did want to share one more thing with you. West Virginia and its surrounding states, West Virginia is the most dangerous state to live in. It averages about twenty-two point one two fire deaths per million residents. That's higher than any other state that touches our border. So we think the fire problem is not here. It's, it's here in our backyard. So we have to be out there sharing these messages. Um, I've been with the Fire Department for about eighteen years. Uh, the last three years I've been assigned with the Fire Marshals Division. For the last ten years, I've been the public education coordinator. So I'm the guy that goes out and, and I see many of you have come talked at your events. I go talk to the kids. Uh, so we're out there doing our best to share this and I've compiled the data over the last ten years and have some averages for you of what we actually do. Then I'll talk briefly about each thing that we do. Every year we reach about eight thousand residents in our outreach. Now, those numbers are skewed just a little bit because every year we run a coloring book program where we provide coloring books for every pre-K through second grader in the program where we provide coloring books for every pre-K through second grader in the county, so that's over three thousand contacts we count there, but we provide those to the kids, I've actually started delivering those this week, the rest will be delivered next week. Our hopes are in delivering those coloring books, they'll go home, the parents will get engaged, and they'll learn a little something 'cause it's a coloring book activity book. We talked about the smoke alarms and the importance of smoke alarms, the Fire Department distributes roughly thirty smoke alarms for free in the community every year. Uh, I have about four years of data where we didn't, uh, either the data was lost or, or whatever, that number's probably a little bit closer to, to forty to forty-five, are provided every year for free within the community. Every frontline fire engine that we have has smoke alarms and carbon monoxide alarms in it, so if they're in a resident's home and they need one, we just give them one. Uh, we also run fire, uh, safety visits in people's homes to where they would call me, myself, or we'll come visit the homes, we'll walk through the homes, we'll point out, um, fire threats to people, we'll ensure that they have a home exit plan, uh, one of the most important things, a home exit plan is being sure that the children know where to go, because if there's a fire and the children go one way and the parents go the other way, the parents are going to go back into the home to find the children. So it is really important that we practice those fire escape plans in our homes to alleviate that possibility of going back in to find your children, 'cause every single one of us are going to do that. If the babies aren't there when we get there, we're going back in, so it's another thing that we try to share, uh, when we talk about those things. Uh, carbon monoxide alarms, we average about fifteen a year that we distribute, smoke alarms are closer to about fifty, uh, we purchase those every year. Uh, fire extinguisher training, we provide fire extinguisher training for free anywhere in the city, industry, businesses, schools, I'll actually be at M-Tech Friday, uh, the local technical center for those of you that aren't familiar, and I'll provide, be providing fire extinguisher training to all the students at M-Tech on Friday. Uh, we teach all incoming first-year students fire extinguishers, you know, they're working in the trades, they, they have a little bit of a higher risk than maybe the kids in the classroom, so we make sure that they know how to use those fire extinguishers if they were to be called upon. Really haven't got a whole lot more other than that, I just wanted to provide you with a little bit of data, share with you what we're trying to do to combat those statistics here in our community, and if there are any questions, I'll take them now.
Um, so we had, we had a, um, as people who were in elementary school a bit, a little while ago, um, we were wondering if you still teach, uh, the stop, drop, and roll?
Okay, so we do still teach that, uh.
Or is it modified now?
Uh, it's, it, they, they have modified it slightly, but it's still the same basic principle, what they've added, they've added an element of being sure that we cover our faces, tucking your elbows, cover your face, because your respiratory system needs a little bit of protection, so we still teach stop, drop, and roll with the addition of covering your face with your hands to ensure that you're not gonna be breathing in that, that, you know, super high heat or the smoke or any of that stuff.
And how involved is, um, training with fire extinguishers, like, is that something that we could, that we could participate in as a group at some point?
Yes, I, we've, I've taught for the, I've taught city personnel before, free fire extinguisher training, we average actually nine, uh, nine hundred and sixty fire extinguisher training sessions a year, nine hundred and sixty total people, through probably about twenty-five sessions, but just about every month I'm providing fire extinguisher training somewhere, uh, fraternities, civics groups, wherever they call, I'll come teach them. Uh, if I can't come teach them, one of the other guys will come teach them, because it's important to, to own that life skill, 'cause it really could help you if you were ever called upon to, to need it.
Nice. Anybody else?
Thank you, guys.
Thank you for coming.
Thank you.
So, um, under correspondence, we next have an Arbor Day proclamation, and I'm just gonna ask, when we get to the proclamations, if there's someone there to receive the proclamation, just so we happen to know whether someone is there. So, um, is there anyone from, for Arbor Day that's here? Okay, I didn't think so. Okay, so, um, we're having, uh, different council people today are going to be reading each of the, um, proclamations, so we would, um, start with the Arbor Day proclamation.
Where, whereas in eighteen seventy-two, J. Sterling Morton proposed to the Nebraska Board of Agriculture that a special day be set aside for the planting of trees. And whereas this holiday called Arbor Day was first observed with the planting of more than a million trees in Nebraska, and whereas the legislator of the state of West Virginia has adopted an acting designating Arbor Day, and by that act has designated the second Friday of every April as the state Arbor Day. And whereas the city of Morgantown will celebrate Arbor Day on October fourteenth, twenty twenty-three, to take advantage of the fall weather, which is an excellent time to plant trees. The shorter days and mild temperatures are less stressful and ensures a greater survival rate on newly planted trees. And whereas it is the purpose of the designation of this day throughout the nation to encourage the planting of shade and forest trees, to encourage the protection of our forests from discouraging devastating insects, diseases, and fires that destroy the beauty and usefulness of our woodlands, parks, and street trees, as well as their wildlife. And whereas trees can reduce the erosion of our precious topsoil by wind and water, cut heating and cooling costs, moderate the temperature, clean the air, produce oxygen, and provide habitat for wildlife. And whereas trees are a renewable resource giving us paper, wood for our homes, fuel for our fires, and countless other wood products, and whereas trees in the city of Morgantown increase property values, enhance the economic vitality of business areas, and beautify our community. And whereas Saturday, October fourteenth, twenty twenty-three, the city of Morgantown will be celebrating Arbor Day and their twenty-sixth year as a Tree City, USA. Now, therefore, I, Deputy Mayor Jawaghanam, on behalf of Jenny Celine, Mayor of the City of Morgantown, do hereby proclaim Saturday, October fourteenth, twenty twenty-three, as Arbor Day. In the city of Morgantown, West Virginia, and urge all citizens to celebrate Arbor Day and to support efforts to protect and enhance our trees throughout the city. And furthermore, I urge all citizens to plant trees to gladden the heart and promote the well-being of this and future generations.
Thank you. Now, we're gonna read, um, the Indigenous Peoples' Day proclamation, I don't believe there's anyone, oh, you are here too, all right. I love it. Um, so, yes, I'll move. Here. You can stay where you are, you can come on up. I remember where you told me I was supposed to do a certain thing. All right. Thank you, glad you're here. Whereas the city of Morgantown, West Virginia officially adopted a twenty-twenty strategic plan for diversity, equity, and inclusion, and has formally embraced the goal of being an inclusive community that welcomes diversity and supports social justice. And whereas Indigenous people all, also referred to collectively as in the U.S. as Native Americans or American Indians and Alaska natives have lived upon this land since time immemorial, as evidenced by oral history and, uh, archaeological evidence throughout our state in Morgantown and in Ohio, Hopewell ceremonial work works is a UNESCO world heritage site as of September twenty-third, twenty twenty-three. And whereas the Howard, Dinosaunee, Iroquois nations, the Shawnee, uh, Lenape, um, Delaware, and other historic tribes regard this area as being within their ancestral lands, and there are descendants of Indigenous peoples living here today, uh, and more than five hundred and seventy federally recognized Native nations in the U.S. and nearly ten million Native people nationwide. And whereas innumerable U.S. place names come from Indigenous languages, notably Manahuila and Iroquois, um, term meaning River of Falling Banks, and hundreds of Indigenous languages are still spoken throughout the Americas, including nearly two hundred in the U.S., with Indigenous language terms found throughout the Americas, um, English vocabulary. And whereas for centuries, Indigenous peoples have provided friendship, guidance, economic, trade, political alliance, and protection to others. Native American men and women have an enduring distinguished record of serving the U.S. military at a rate five times greater than the national average. And whereas over the centuries, Native Americans have generously provided food to starving pilgrims, revolutionary army troops at Valley Forge, the Lewis and Clark Expedition, and countless others, thus aiding the survival of non-natives and eventual formation of the United States. An estimated sixty percent of the world's current food supply originated with Indigenous North America, and today's Native nations, farmers, and laborers contribute to feeding the overall population. And whereas societal progress has been accomplished through the contributions of Indigenous peoples, including the foundation of the country's democratic representational form of government, inspired by the original centuries-old Howard and Saunee, uh, Iroquois Confederacy, um, while, which acknowledged women's sovereign rights to political power and to purchase, own, and sell property. Whereas Indigenous Peoples' Day was first proposed in, um, nineteen seventy-seven, and whereas throughout the U.S., more than two hundred cities and thirty states honor Indigenous Peoples' Day, um, and in so doing help promote a healthy, inclusive, respectful path forward. Whereas the city of Morgantown recognized Indigenous peoples' history, perseverance, societal presence, past, and ongoing contributions. Uh, whereas, uh, WVU's Native American Studies Program is hosting the land that was already loved, um, free public programming on October ninth and tenth, twenty twenty-three, um, and all of you are invited, um, with esteemed leaders from the Shawnee Tribe, Eastern Shawnee Tribe, Delaware Nation, Delaware Tribe of Indians, Cherokee Nation, and the Howard and Saunee, uh, Confederacy, each discussion, discussing their nation's ancestral connections to West Virginia. Whereas the city of Morgantown wishes to help preserve and promote the history and culture of Indigenous people by officially observing the Indigenous Peoples' Day, continuing to promote respect for all people and acknowledging that diversity enriches and strengthens this community. Now, therefore, I, Jenny Celine, Mayor of the City of Morgantown, on behalf of the city council, do hereby declare the second Monday of October as Indigenous Peoples' Day and encourage continued recognition, appreciation, celebration of Indigenous peoples through goodwill, respect, and friendship. Thank you, Mayor. Thank you very much. That's you. Is there, is there anything that you would like to say on behalf of your commission or Indigenous Peoples' Day, and I will go and sit down and you can say it?
You may sit, and I shall at very least introduce myself. I am Annie Cronin York, I am the Chair of the Human Rights Commission. This is something that has been our agenda every month for probably two years, to keep this proclamation going, it was done last year, but it's gotta be renewed each year to keep the spirit alive. And so Bonnie Brown has been the motivator behind most of this, and did all of that very fine typing that I can't read. Good on you. So on behalf of the Human Rights Commission, thank you for the proclamation.
And you can read it down there and then pass it to the person receiving it?
Okay. Should we move the mic?
Um, you certainly can.
I didn't know if they could hear us on the YouTube or not.
You could put it somewhere like, yeah, that would be good.
Okay. Whereas each year on November twentieth, the world observes Transgender Day of Remembrance as a day of mourning to honor the memories of the lives of those who are lost in an act of anti-transgender violence, first observed in nineteen ninety-nine as a means of remembering Rita Hester, who was brutally murdered in Boston one year earlier on November twenty-eighth, nineteen eight, ninety-eight, a crime that remains unsolved to this day. And whereas the city of Morgantown also marks November as Transgender Awareness Month to raise awareness of issues impacting transgender people and take this opportunity to honor the transgender community. And whereas the city of Morgantown continues to make historic progress in establishing programs and policies that support the transgender, non-binary, and gender, non-conforming communities and create greater equity for their participation and involvement in society. And whereas the city of Morgantown continually reaffirms that we are a city of all people, one where our transgender, non-binary, and gender non-conforming communities are fully accepted and embraces these, and, and embraced, I think is what's supposed to be said there, these annual remembrances remind us to live openly in an authentic and accurate representation of who we are, and to be able to live free of violence, harassment, and discrimination. And whereas the city of Morgantown joins to support the goals of this observance, to wear, to raise awareness of acts of violence committed against transgender individuals, and further develop a strong network of action to stop all incidents rooted in hatred, bias, and fear. And that helps us to move forward as a society with confidence through programs and policies that foster greater compassion and understanding, uh, within a positive and constructive context. And whereas the city of Morgantown remains dedicated to these ideals, which preserve a core value of our democracy and one that will, we will always vigorously defend and uphold, and we will commemorate this month as we continue to take action to protest the transgender, non-binary, and gender non-conforming communities, and continue the ongoing fight for full LGBTQ plus rights and equality. Now, therefore, I, Brian Butcher, on behalf of Jenny Celine, Mayor, Mayor of the city of Morgantown, West Virginia, on behalf of the city council, do hereby proclaim the first day of November, twenty twenty-three, as Transgender Awareness Month, and join with people across the globe in a special recognition of the worldwide observance of November twentieth, twenty twenty-three, as Transgender Day of Remembrance in the city of Morgantown. I present this to you, Ash, thank you, and yeah, if you wanna say anything else here?
Yeah, I appreciate it.
Yeah, thank you.
Uh, yes, my name is Ash Orr, uh, my pronouns are they, he, and I was, wanted to say something really briefly here, um, so for those who are not aware, over five hundred anti-LGBTQ bills have been introduced throughout the country, with over four hundred specifically targeting the trans community, and that was just within twenty twenty-three. Um, during the last legislative session in West Virginia, we saw over fifteen anti-LGBTQ bills introduced with two passing, impacting the healthcare of trans youth and allowing for discrimination against our community. But it's important to know that with progress, there will always come backlash, and that we need to remember that trans people are your friends, your family members, your neighbors, your coworkers, business owners, and simple everyday West Virginians. At a time when our community is being attacked, uh, by lawmakers and within the media, it's very powerful to see the city of Morgantown use their platform to show support for the trans community. Trans-inclusive initiatives such as this proclamation strengthen allyship and increase public awareness of diverse gender identities and sexual orientations present within our community. These initiatives are not, are not only fostering allyship, but they, they create a safer and more equitable place to live, which enable trans community members to thrive here in Morgantown. So thank you all very much, I really appreciate this.
Thank you. Municipal Government Week proclamation, and I think we would be handing that off to our clerk? Be appropriate?
So whereas Governor Justice has proclaimed October sixteenth through the twentieth as Municipal Government Week in West Virginia, and encourages all citizens to become more informed about their government, and whereas all incorporated cities, towns, and villages in West Virginia provide services to their citizens, and whereas citizens of cities, towns, and villages may not be totally aware of those services, and who is responsible for seeing they are efficiently provided, and whereas municipal officials desire to inform their citizens and to make them more aware of the investment made on their behalf, and whereas municipal officials are planning various events to better inform citizens during Municipal Government Week, and whereas one of the highest priorities is to educate in the mountain state as to what municipal government is and the positive impact it has on their lives, and whereas the West Virginia Municipal League will assist in educating citizens in installing positive perception of government, particularly at the municipal level. Now, therefore, I, Dave Harshbarger, on behalf of Jenny Celine, Mayor of Morgantown, West Virginia, do hereby proclaim the week of October sixteenth through twentieth, twenty twenty-three, as Municipal Government Week.
Nice.
Thank you for your efforts.
Yes, thank you. Um, would you like to, at this time, just list off the activities, just so?
Sure.
People are aware of them?
Yeah. Okay, um, we will start off, uh, on Tuesday, seventeenth. Many of our departments will be heading over to Eastwood Elementary to educate the students there, um, we'll be taking some trucks and backhoes and snow plows, um.
That's so cool.
Uh, fire truck, police cruiser, um, a parking authority. Fire truck, police cruiser, parking authority, boot and vehicle. We're trying to get everyone in, you know? We thought what a great idea to educate the kids as, when they're young, and maybe we might have some new leaders in, in about fifteen or so years. Get them, let them know what, what we do, what the city does for their families who live in this area, and it'll be an exciting day. So we'll be doing that on Tuesday. Wednesday, we'll be having the mock City Council meeting in the municipal courtroom, and that will be with the MHS students, so we're excited about doing that again. And that is at ten o'clock, nine?
Ten, ten o'clock, I think.
Ten in the morning, yeah, and so. Yeah, and so we invite folks to come to that because it was pretty, pretty interesting last time. So we're looking forward to some good topics this year to have their city council vote on and discuss. And then Thursday, we'll be kind of honoring our employees and, and the work and the service that they do for our community and that's, that's it. Well, we have one other thing. I'll, I'll let Deputy Mayor Abu speak on that. Whatever you want.
And then we have Drew, who's in charge of our media and like the website and our logo. He's going, him along on this way, they're going to come in and present to my marketing students as well as our travel and recreation students about marketing the city of Morgantown, and he's going to run a lesson on promoting and all that fun stuff.
He sure's got us fully branded, doesn't he? That's good. All right. Now we have Domestic Violence Awareness Month proclamation?
Whereas a crime of domestic violence and individuals' privacy, dignity, security, and humanity due to the systematic use of physical, emotional, sexual, psychological, and economical control and/or abuse, including abuse to children and the elderly. And whereas domestic violence against the citizens of Montegalee County continues to affect every person in Montegalee County as a victim, survivor, or as a family member, domestic partner, friend, coworker, or neighbor of a victim or survivor. And whereas the problems of domestic violence are not confined to any group or groups of people, but cut across all economic, racial, gender, and social barriers and are supported by social indifferences. And whereas to prevent the future abuse of our citizens, it is critical to foster greater public awareness of all the causes and effects of domestic violence and to address this problem on every civic level. And whereas the state, the staff of Rape and Domestic Violence Information Center alongside volunteers promote domestic violence prevention by offering educational services in Montegalee County throughout the year. And whereas the Rape and Domestic Violence Information Center requests public support and assistance as they continue to work toward a society where all people can live in peace, free from violence and exploitation. I Louise Michael, on behalf of Jenny Celine, Mayor of the City of Morgantown, West Virginia, in recognition of the important work done by the Rape and Domestic Violence Information Center serving Montegalee, Preston, and Taylor Counties, as well, as well as other domestic violence programs, the city of Morgantown does hereby proclaim the month of October to be Domestic Violence Awareness Month. I didn't realize.
I didn't either. I, I should have, because I recognize your face now, but anyway.
Very grateful for you.
Thank you very much.
Yes, no, you are encouraged to tell us about your organization and, and what this means to you.
All right, thank you so much. I'm All-Star Branch Officer myself. My name is Hannah Richards. I am the DV Specialist with RDVIC. I operate primarily out of the Mon County office. But on behalf of the agency, I just want to say thank you guys for the continued support and due to the continued recognition, we are celebrating fifty years of service this year. So that's a huge accomplishment for agencies such as ours. So again, thank you all, and thank you to the community of Mon County and Preston and Taylor.
Thank you.
Why don't you tell us a little bit about your event that's coming up?
We do have our gala coming up. It is October thirteenth. It is going to be in Hotel Morgan. Details can be found on our website, which is rdvic.org, or you can go to any of our social media platforms, Facebook, Instagram. It is, again, in recognition of our fifty years of service, there are going to be heavy hors d'oeuvres. We are going to be having entertainment. I believe it's Rick Kay and the All Nighters. We're also going to be having raffles and other little things going on throughout the event, so we welcome all of our surrounding counties and communities to come and join us that night. Tickets are on sale, of course, and we have a couple of different options as far as tickets go. And if price is an issue for anybody in the community, just give us a call and we can work that out with whoever needs it.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Now we have our Community Planning Month, last but not least, last but not least. There's no one, so I should stay here?
I don't, I don't believe. Is there anyone here to receive the Community Planning Month proclamation? I think Ricky is out of, or is not here, and so.
Got it.
You can pass it to yourself as members. I'm sorry.
Whereas change is constant and affects all cities, towns, suburbs, counties, boroughs, townships, rural areas, and other places. And whereas community planning and plans can help manage this change in a way that provides better choices for how people work and live. And whereas community planning provides an opportunity for all residents to be meaningfully involved in making choices that determine the future of their community. And whereas the full benefit of planning requires public officials and citizens who understand, support, and demand excellence in planning and plan implementation. And whereas the month of October is designated as National Community Planning Month throughout the United States of America and its territories. And whereas American Planning Association endorses National Community Planning Month as an opportunity to highlight how planning is essential to recovery and how planners can lead communities to equitable, resilient, and long-lasting recovery. And whereas the celebration of National Community Planning Month gives us the opportunity to publicly recognize the participation and dedication of the members of the planning commissions and other citizen planners who have contributed their time and expertise to the improvement of the city of Morgantown. And whereas we recognize the many valuable contributions made by professional community and regional planners in the community and extend our heartfelt thanks for the continued commitment to public service by these professionals. Now therefore, I Danielle Trumbull, on behalf of Jenny Celine, Mayor of the City of Morgantown, and on behalf of City Council, do hereby designate the month of October twenty twenty-three as Community Planning Month in the city of Morgantown, West Virginia, in conjunction with the celebration of National Community Planning Month. I will see that the planning commission and the planner gets this.
That'd be great. Thank you. We do not have any public hearings tonight, but we do have some boards and commissions. And why don't we start off with Counselor Bill Kueke, if he has a nomination for this evening?
I do. Thank you very much. My nomination is Cindy O'Brien to the Boards and Boundary Commission, Second Ward Representative.
Second, perfect. By acclamation, yep. All right. Thank you. And then anyone else who?
Sure. I'd like to nominate Katie C. for the Planning Commission.
Second.
By acclamation, all right.
Mayor, I'd like to nominate Jordan Hyde to the Health and Wellness Commission.
Wonderful. Is there a second?
Second.
All right. All good? All right. All right. Sorry.
I'd like to nominate Mason Arbogast to the Well, Fitness and Wellness Committee.
Wonderful. Second, thank you. All right, by acclamation. Yep. All right. Can't remember if you had one. All right, we're good, sorry. All right, we have made our boards and commissions. Okay, now we're on to the public portion, which shall be subject to rules established by council and adopted by resolution. And we will open this. There's, okay. So anyone who is wishing to speak can have an opportunity to come and speak.
Hi, how are you guys?
Mary Ann Foles, eight twenty-eight Bloody Run Road. I wanted to, first of all, thank you because I, I've seen some drug arrests in the last week or two, and that's just wonderful. I mean, I think it's huge progress that we're making to finally try to get that under control. Because as you know, it's, it's everybody's on top of mind topic these days, so that's wonderful. And then I had some requests. The first request would be for the website, that the city website, you know, and I spent my career in IT, so I could help you with this. I think if we could build that out a little bit better, maybe have a little bit more topics that you can drill into, I think that would be really helpful. And, you know, it would be great if there would be like a public comment section, because I've got kind of a list here and I don't know where to submit these things. I think that would be really helpful. But if there's any way that I could, you know, kind of help give you some ideas on things to, to add to the website, I think people would really appreciate that. Okay. Then I also wanted to thank you for posting the Comprehensive Plan to the website. I've looked at that. I think that's really good. One thing that I thought we should add to it, I don't know if it's before beyond that comment, I know it's, it's a topic a little bit later tonight. But I did think that there should be in the transportation section, an, an item that says, you know, the major thoroughfare through our town is consistently congested, which is from University Avenue through Beechers Avenue and out to Chestnut Ridge or out to Star City. That's probably one of our major transportation, transportation, transportation issues, and I didn't see that specifically called out there. And then when we get to the, when you guys get the Comprehensive Plan agreed to, which I know you're voting on here in the next couple of months, it would be awesome if there could be like an action plan associated with that. So you get the plan in general on the, you know, on the, on the books, and then come up with some specific things of here as a city, this is what we're going to do, and these are the dates we're going to do them by, and then give the public an update on, let's call it, at least a quarterly basis, on here's the things that we're doing, and, give everybody updates, because people want to see progress. So I think that would be really helpful. And if you need community involvement because you don't have enough staff to address some of the things, I think, you know, requesting that would be really helpful. That would be another thing that you could put out there on the website, so people could have access to, to see that. And then related to safety, you know, because that's really our big issue. I'll talk fast. You know, I would love to hear on a, on a monthly basis, or at least a quarterly basis, updates from the Chief of Police on how many drug, drug use and, and sale arrests are being made? What, what are we doing about littering? What are we doing about property destruction? And how many folks are being taken to the, the sobering center? Because I know that's an issue right now, and I think it's a great resource, we're just not using it. And the last thirty seconds, I would love to see our city ambassadors or someone within the city helping out these folks who are getting graffiti on their buildings. I mean, it's really not fair that we're fining them or asking folks to go and spend money to clean it up or spend the time to clean it up. I would love to see the city, the city ambassadors organize and, and, you know, and get that taken care of for people, and at least, you know, don't fine them. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
So we appreciate anyone else who would like to get up and speak, if they're wanting to. This is your moment, if you have anything particular that you would like to say. And otherwise, we will move on, but I'd like to.
I'm sorry, it's me again. I recently completed the city's Municipal Equality Index, which measures LGBTQ friendliness by thehumanrights.org, humanrightscampaign.org. It was a lot of work and a lot of phone calls to a lot of people. And I want to thank Emily and Christine and Heather and Kim and John B. and, and poor Brian, who has to answer all my calls. And Jenny, you came by and signed the letter late at night to get the report in on time. In the past, we have scored a hundred, which is not a perfect score, but that's the highest score that they have a show for anyone. I went through the scores recently and was surprised to find that the highest score in the nation goes to Detroit, Michigan. And the lowest ones go to every place in Wyoming. West Virginia does very, very well. Morgantown, Huntington, Charleston traditionally get a hundred as a score, and I think there's a hundred and twenty-eight points possible, but those are all sort of mentioned in parentheses. So if you get a hundred, good enough. We got a provisional score that we're not meant to discuss. I think with my report that there will be higher than it was on a provisional score. Generally speaking, everybody has been great in helping me get the numbers together and get the report done. And in possibly fifteen seconds past the deadline, but they weren't awake at the time anyway, so it's okay. They didn't say which time zone it had been. So it has been submitted, and we'll have our score probably in December. And I'll present the report then. Thank you.
Thank you for your work. All right, I do not see anyone else coming to the podium, so I will close that session. And now we're on to new business, consideration of approval of a first reading of an ordinance pending Article thirteen oh one of the Morgantown Planning and Zoning Code pertaining to the Comprehensive Plan for the Physical Development of the City of Morgantown. To delete references to the twenty thirteen Comprehensive Plan and to adopt the twenty twenty-three Comprehensive Plan, Morgantown twenty thirty-three. So that's kind of a cool name, thinking toward ten years into the future. So let's see, I think we start off with the city attorney on that one.
Thank you, Mayor. As Development Services Director Ricky Jaeger and our consultants from Riverside are well presented at the City Council's Committee of the Whole. The Comprehensive Planning Process has been a two-year-long process involving multiple community stakeholders and public meetings for input. The plan has been presented to the Planning Commission as required by state code and submitted to the City Council for its consideration. This is a planning document that will, that will guide the council's decisions on zoning amendments going forward, as well as the administrative processes of the Planning Commission and Board of Zoning Appeals. Our consultant Ron Sussens, as well as Eden Merrick, are available to answer any questions from council as to the substance of the plan. If there are additional questions, follow in the Committee of the Whole presentation, and I'm happy to address any questions about adoption or otherwise as well. But I believe the, the details of the plan were thoroughly presented at the Committee of the Whole meeting.
All right. I don't know if you want to read it, or do you want me to read it? Do you have the document pulled up from the city attorney?
Do you want to email?
Yes, if you. Yes, if you would. So...
You go ahead and read it. I'm not 100.
All right, I will do it, all right. So, let's see. We should have a motion on the first item. Move to approve.
Second.
Thank you. And then, this is a possible, relative to comments made at our last meeting, these are some possible items that we could add to the plan. So, I'm just going to read them, and then you all can decide whether it's something that you're interested in following up on, adding to the plan. So, environmental element chapter on page 116, the following additions were made, and that would be E.3.3c, collaborate with the city tree board and other stakeholders to evaluate and establish a tree canopy cover goal for the city of Morgantown and plan for implementation. And then, with regard to E.3.7, collaborate with stakeholders to address the policy issues, goals, and implementation strategies set forth in the climate action plan prepared by the city's green team and adopted by council resolution on December 6, 2022. And implementation chapter, we would add environment, page 209. And then, ED 1.1, reference was added to Morgantown Municipal Airport. I think they were, there was something else with regard to an airport authority, which we do not have, and so this is Morgantown Municipal Airport, which is what we do have. So, this is something that we can choose to amend into now, relative to discussion at our last meeting.
Move to approve.
Thank you. Is there a second?
Second.
And, so, let's see. I believe, pardon?
Do you want to vote on that?
Yeah. I believe we vote on the amendment first and then the main motion? All right. So, then we would vote up or down on that? Does anyone have any comments on that before we vote?
All right, just quickly, this is some of the things that were proposed to us by the green team. They did an extensive memorandum, which was submitted September 21, more detailed comments, but specifically, at their last meeting, they named their concerns as being these primarily. For example, the tree cover in Morgantown, we currently have it at 37 percent, whereas Pittsburgh, much more dense and certainly covered with more concrete, has a 60 percent quota that they're trying to achieve. So, I think this is really very good, and I'd like to thank the green team for being proactive in bringing this forward.
And I agree, because we already passed these initiatives, so I would think that the numbers and the concepts would carry over into our comprehensive plan, so I appreciate this being added.
One last comment, if you don't mind. The green team talked about, they're very happy with the comprehensive plan total, as I am, but they also suggested, as one of our speakers prior, that we need to be more specific in our goals. And I do hope that we will take this and move it forward with specific goals that we may accomplish, based on these wonderful aspirations. So, in any case, I think I've said everything that the green team would like me to say, and I really hope we move this forward.
And I agree, we were even asked in the public comment this evening to have more specific goals and measures, and these organizations are offering up goals and measures, so I think we should be looking at developing those, even some of them that are already developed, we could be inserting them in as we move forward. This is a good start. Is there anyone else who's wishing to speak on that amendment? On that amendment? All right. If you would please call the roll on that amendment. Yes. Deputy Mayor Bouganum?
Yes.
Bill Kowecki?
Yes.
Wheezy Michael?
Yes.
Danielle Trumbull?
Yes.
Dave Harshbarger?
Yes.
Brian Butcher?
Yes.
Mayor Celine? Yes, so the amendment passes unanimously, and now we're back to the main motion. Do you have comments?
I do.
I could tell, because you were saying, is this the moment, or is it the moment and a minute, so here we are.
I'm thrilled that we took feedback that we received last week, and at the Planning Commission the week before that, and have added amendments into the comprehensive plan. We still have nothing about the Richwood project in here. It's barely mentioned, I believe, one time, and I would really, really like to see us consider adding it as a focus area, because that is a huge development that is going to mean a lot to our city, and it's really going to help shape the future of our downtown area, as well as my neighborhood, and I think that we're doing ourselves a disservice by simply overlooking it. I don't know if the city's kind of thinking that it's development authority and map and a developer, and we should be more hands-off, but I think that's the opposite of what we should be doing.
So, let's see, so we've already passed a motion. Do we want to add in a request? If we do not have language right now, we could pass, if council wanted to, a request that it be considered, or that language be added for next meeting? I think part of it is that that project is kind of partway through, so I'm not sure, because focus areas kind of are from scratch.
If, yeah, I mean, if we could maybe get language added for the next reading, to vote for an amendment for next time, I think that would be appropriate, right?
Council, yes.
Yeah.
Thank you. I share that concern with the Richwood project. I'm not sure that placing it in the comprehensive plan would make a significant difference, but I would like to see a little more focus, and a little more hands-on from council in what happens to that project.
What's the suggestion?
I was going to ask, I think what council's suggesting is that we add this area as a small area study area, there are five others, I believe, designated in the plan, is that true?
Yeah, there's five focus areas.
Might we, might we ask our consultants, Ron and Eden, if we have enough information based on that request to discuss amending the plan tonight, so we could send that recommendation back to the Planning Commission and move forward with council's adoption of the plan by ordinance, or whether that would better be done as an amendment to the plan later, because the plan can also be adopted and then amended by city council.
Give us a good hint, you're muted.
Thank you for that, good evening, city council. Yes, I think that's absolutely right. We could, you know, add language now, or amend the plan, or I think it's, you know, we can go either way, whichever way council directs us to update the plan. So...
Thank you, Ron. If council were to entertain a motion tonight to add the Richwood neighborhood as a focus area or small study area, would that, in your opinion, be sufficient detail to prepare an update to the appendix to the plan to reflect that, or are those areas designated by something more specific that you would want to work with staff to identify that in the plan?
I think that we can add to the appendix, the addition to Richwood area. In the current comprehensive, in the current version of the comprehensive plan, we have identified five small area locations and included a general map that shows the general location of those small aerial areas within the city, so we could do a similar exercise for the Richwood area as well, to kind of designate where that Richwood project is located, and get a little context to that small area.
So, we could, could we vote on that, subject to approval of the language at the next meeting, so we can show that we're in favor of it?
Thank you. Well, I think, what I was trying to ask, and I think we're okay on this, is whether we could, council could entertain that motion tonight, and then the details could be fleshed out later. What I would suggest to you is either that you make any amendments tonight on first reading of your ordinance, or defer any changes until later after the ordinance is adopted, so that there are no potentially material amendments on the second reading. But I think that if council would entertain tonight a motion to amend the comprehensive plan to add the Richwood area as a small area, study area, consistent with the other small area studies provided in the plan, that would be sufficient to move forward. And so, if you'd like to propose a motion to do that now, I think that would be sufficient for our purposes.
So, I propose to amend the comprehensive plan, adding the Richwood area as focus area number six.
That sounds great.
Second.
So, is there any other discussion on that matter, and then we'll...
Well, we'll vote on this, and then, yeah. I don't want to lump your stuff.
Subject to language at our next meeting or something? Do we need that, or are we good right like this?
I think that will be fine.
So, if you would call the roll.
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Bouganum?
Yes.
Bill Kowecki?
Yes.
Wheezy Michael?
Yes.
Danielle Trumbull?
Yes.
Dave Harshbarger?
Yes.
Brian Butcher?
Yes.
Mayor Celine? Yes, passes unanimously. Are there any other items that anyone is wishing to discuss?
While we're still sort of on the subject of environmental part of the plan, would it be possible, prudent, amenable to the council, to add a goal of complete electrification of all city buildings to the comprehensive plan? Like all electric?
Could we... I've seen, I've seen that, I know what you're talking about. So, could we fold that into, so you're talking under environmental?
Madam Mayor, if you don't mind?
Yes.
I think that might be something, it's not specifically spelled out, but with any idea of us trying to achieve, what was it, I'm looking...
Yeah, like carbon neutrality.
A climate goal by a certain percentage.
Yeah, we, you know, we do have that adopted, as our goal is to achieve that, and certainly that's one of the ways to do it. Whether or not it's completely possible, some of the buildings we own, that's a hard call, but I don't know that that needs to be in our comprehensive plan beyond what we have of achieving the goal that we're hoping to do.
Maybe we could send it to the green team for consideration and inclusion, because they do a nice job of looking at our utility bills and working toward those climate change specific goals that we adopted last year, so it's not an empty exercise when we're talking about specific climate goals and how we're going to achieve them, because they make specific suggestions, such as exactly your suggestion.
That's true, it goes back to the specific goal of reducing greenhouse gas emission in municipal facilities by 52 percent below the level of 2005. So, and we're trying to do that by 2030, so I think that certainly that's one of the possibilities, going all electric, but again, I don't know that mandating all electric, I think we need to just set the goal and try to achieve it.
But I would like to see that as an operational goal, but I just would like it to be part of their recommendations, so if it was alright with you...
Maybe it's something we could consider amending later on, if it looks like it fits in that goal.
Yeah, if this body could send that specifically to the green team for consideration as part of them, because what we're, because we're not putting specific numbers on things tonight.
Yeah.
But we are asking them to come up with, similar to asking the tree board to come up with specific plans, we're asking them to come up with specific plans, potentially with numbers, so we could ask if they would like to consider that and add that in there, to some degree.
Good.
Could we do that, Bill, to send that to them and ask them how they would like to fit that into the plan?
Well, I think, certainly, I agree, that, you know, the idea of going electric is appropriate in terms of reducing some of the reliance on fossil fuels, perhaps, but I'm more interested in achieving the end goal than I am as to the specific as to how, and I agree with you, that we need to put to people who are capable of making these recommendations, we need to give them some breathing room so they can do that, and the tree board's a good example.
Very good.
Are you satisfied that something's actually going to happen with it? They're wanting, well, they're wanting specific numbers.
That's a different question.
I know. Well, they're, they're wanting specific numbers, and so we've kind of given them the request as part of it to have specifics, so that very likely would be, to some degree, part of their specifics, so it would be...
And I agree with Bill, like, the goal is, I mean, that is part of an end goal.
But you need the, you need the specifics, or you never get to the goal, so...
When we're doing, I'm sorry, I don't mean to interrupt, but when we're doing specifics, could we have something, not in that language, regarding solar, like solar power on our buildings to help?
You writing this down, Bill?
Yeah, I'm listening.
Solar on buildings.
Because that could be, I think that could be a measure.
And then, a goal of electric.
I think there are a lot of ways to get there.
There are.
I think we just need to look for the opportunities that present themselves, and I think the idea of having, you know, the end goal that we're going for, and try to achieve it, figure out the best way, that's the most appropriate course of action. I don't want to hamstring anybody into, this is a particular path you need to run, I just want to make, I want to, I want to get there, but I'm not particularly concerned that I identify every possible method of doing it.
But they want to see specifics, and these guys want to see specifics, so it seems like we could have a workshop or do something where we're really looking at these things and hammer out a list.
Again, you know, the comprehensive plan that we have with the various, the things that we put in tonight, I think is a very good document, and I think we should move forward without getting into too much detail.
All right.
Thank you.
Are we, are we without an amendment on those items, as long as we possibly amend them back in as part of a climate change addendum, or...
Yep.
Okay. Any other items?
Any other items? All right.
Yeah, no, we want to hear it. This is, this is the mo, this is, first reading, this is the time when we need to be doing what we do.
Um, I saw, I saw some mentions in, um, the comprehensive plan about, um, encouraging um, state governments to help us with various projects or things, initiatives that we might want to do. Um, I recently had a email to, um, some of the city management, Drew Cantus, and, um, our, our public works director about, um, um, let me get the exact name of it for this public, reclaimed asphalt pavement, which is,
What is it?
reclaimed asphalt pavement, where you take millings and reuse reclaimed, um, asphalt, um, to make pavement. And, uh, it's like really cost-effective, very environmental, environmentally friendly. And what Drew, um, wrote back to me with a really detailed, um, reason why we don't use that. And mostly, I think it relies on the fact that suppliers aren't necessarily encouraged to use it because the UH doesn't. Um, and, uh, some states require a certain percentage of that being mixed in with the pavement. So maybe as part of like a legislative priority, and this doesn't even necessarily have to go in the comprehensive plan, but I know that some of this was in there, so I thought might be appropriate, um, that, uh, they've encouraged, uh, some states have some percentage of, um, reclaimed asphalt pavement that is required to be used. And I, I think that would, if the DOH used it, then we could, like, uh, up our production of that specific material.
I think that we actually do some of that, or have donated those millings to others, and.
Yeah, he said, um, that the millings do not, please trust shirt that the millings generated from our projects do not go to waste. Um, material that simply, they reuse it in other ways for like aggregate fill, he says. Uh, they used one thousand tons from this year's project of finishing grading the main parking area for future recreation of the new reservoir.
Right, that's, that's the one, is the reservoir, and I think there's.
Last year it was the aquatic center, right?
Mm-hmm.
So we use our own, right? But the goal would be to be supplied with that material for, as like part of our paving projects to be more cost-effective, but yeah.
So if we would like to make that one of our legislative priorities, is asking that percentage? Then if you have an idea for what you would like that to be, we should add that, because right now we're assembling our list of legislative priorities, so put that right in there.
Okay, yeah.
That seems like something that people could agree with, because it would save money.
Well, it saves money, yeah.
And, yeah, saves money. We can all agree on that, potentially.
Just like, as an aside.
And resources.
The reason why I heard about it was because of, uh, national committee hearing, and our conservative legislator brought it up as like a cost-effective measure. So I think it's, it's something that we feel.
I think also, um, sometimes it's a machinery issue. I've asked about it also. Sometimes it's a machinery issue, that you need a machine that picks it up and, and heats it up and puts it back down. And I'm not sure, because we mill, and then while later we come back and pave. So I, we, it might partially be a machine issue, so, um, but it would be great to get the state doing it and, um, then consider it for ourselves.
Absolutely.
Or vice versa.
Um, the last thing I wanted to say was, um, I went over, uh, the thing that's probably of greatest interest to me, which was like the housing portion of this comprehensive plan. Um, and I have to say, it's kind of, it, it's great, the, the things that have been added in there. Um, Ryan, am, am I correct in assuming that a lot of the things that we have in that part of it, we would need to take action legislatively in order to, to enact?
That's, that's correct. Oh, I'm sorry.
No, go ahead.
Uh, this is, so this will be our planning document. Every time city council considers a change in its zoning code, it will refer to the comprehensive plan and decide whether that change is consistent with the plan. So when you, you see those goals in the housing portion of the plan, uh, then the idea would be for the planning commission to look at those goals and either based on administrative recommendations, or when considering petitions, to, uh, recommend changes to the zoning code itself to accomplish that, and then council could enact those into law. Thank you.
Um, and I just wanted to call out like a couple of things that I saw in there, just to like give kudos to planning of our city. Um, things that like we've, a, a lot of us have asked for, for a long time, and I think are, are, are great things. Um, development of inclusionary zoning, uh, just cause evictions, um, lots of references to different ways that we can do homeownership programs, such as through section eight, and just in general throughout the city, um, funding, um, eviction stabilization funds uh, to keep people housed if, if they're facing eviction. Um, so I, I just wanted to express my appreciation for those parts of the plan and call them out specifically, because, um, I think they were, it's, it's very conscientious and, um, forward-thinking, well done. So, thank you. That's all.
I love, like, including the, the courtyards, where they have shared space in a courtyard, and then they have, um, that's sort of an old-fashioned California thing that isn't, people are trying to get back into use. But it would be great to have more innovative use of space with some shared space so that, um, we can keep the costs down and people can afford housing.
I saw a design.
Yeah.
From FMHA.
I've been to one, I've been to one in, um, Charleston has one.
Mm-hmm, yeah, like the bungalows and stuff.
Mm-hmm. Yep, yep. So, is there anything else? I think we're to the voting part, because I think you motioned at the very beginning. So if there's, I'm just looking to see a, thank you. All right. Okay. Deputy Mayor, have we gone?
Yes.
Bill Kowicki?
Yes.
Wheezy Michael?
Yes.
Danielle Tremble?
Yes.
Dave Harshbarger?
Yes.
Brian Butcher?
Yes.
Mayor Celine?
Yes. Passes unanimously. One more reading, and I appreciate all the hard work that's gone into it and everyone's comments this evening. So, move on. Consideration of approval and amend the police civil service commission rules and regulations, um, city attorney.
Thank you, Mayor. Uh, under state law, the city is required to have a police civil service commission, and that civil service commission is then given the power to adopt rules that are, uh, consistent with state law, but prescribe procedures for, uh, things like hiring, promotion, uh, and other functions assigned to the commission. Uh, the, the civil service commissioners met and prepared some proposed changes, I believe with the assistance of the city clerk's office, and those are presented in your packet tonight. Very briefly, some of the changes include establishing a written public notice procedure for competitive examinations for, uh, potential new hires to the police department. Setting the required written exam passing score for those new applicants at seventy percent on the written examination. Prescribing and mostly retaining the existing competitive examination process for those potential new hires that involves a written examination, uh, physical agility tests, an oral examination before the civil service commissioners, a, uh, polygraph investigation, a background investigation, and a psychological examination. Uh, the commission does propose a change to the oral examination, that it not be a pass-fail step in that hiring process, but rather that it can, uh, simply be used by the appointing officer in making a decision on who to select from the eligible applicants for the, uh, for the position. Uh, the rules add a veteran qualification for certification exams during their probationary period, which is an update required by state law. Provides a, a specific reinstatement procedure that's available to officers who have left the force and would like to return within two years, um, also just to, uh, to track state law. It specifies how seniority points are calculated and awarded for promotional examinations. Uh, that'll be based on the total days of service, excluding any time before reinstatement, and also provides a set of tiebreakers for promotional examinations, uh, based on the written exam score, the time and grade, and the order of hiring. And finally, it provides a procedure for non-competitive examinations, which are used to make provisional appointments for a limited period of time when there's not sufficient time to fill an opening with a competitive examination. So, uh, based on West Virginia Code eight dash fourteen dash ten, paragraph one, the city council has the opportunity to either approve or reject the rules proposed by the commission. And, uh, then of course you can, uh, talk with the commission or make recommendations to the commission. But the, the rules presented by the commission are, uh, are simply, uh, recommended for them for approval by the council.
So, um, do we have a motion to approve?
Move to approve?
Is there a second?
Second.
And then, are there any other comments or considerations from you?
Just one commoner question. It looked to me like one of the changes was to remove the annual physical test to just the entry-level agility physical test. Is that correct?
Uh, I did see that change as well, counselor. The rules previously specified, uh, a regular annual physical examination. I am not sure whether removing that from the civil service commission removes it as a requirement. It may be a part of the continuing law enforcement professional standards to meet those, uh, physical requirements. And it may just be that they're no longer referenced in our local rules, but, uh, but I'm not certain exactly why the commission made that change.
Okay.
Uh, and we certainly, you know, on, on any of these points or areas where, uh, council has other interests, we'd be happy to follow up with the commissioners and ask, uh, ask those questions and, and ask about other changes they might consider.
So at this point, are all of these following, um, current state law?
I believe so, Mayor.
Ryan, the seventy percent, was that the current score?
Uh, I believe that's correct, counselor. I, I think that the rules previously did not state the, the passing score that was required, but the commission had a, a practice of accepting seventy percent.
Yeah, that's what I was thinking, too.
Yeah.
Okay, thank you.
Any other considerations? All right, good. Yes, please.
I don't know if I've had time to fully digest these. We got these yesterday morning. Um, I've read through it, and I feel like I understand most of it. Um, but again, we got it yesterday morning. One question I did have, a substantive question, I guess. What's going on with the polygraphs? It seemed like there was a lot of, like, references to them. It seemed almost like to me like they were no longer a strict requirement anymore, which like, I had talked to somebody else before that I think it's a little silly that they require them to have polygraph tests that are not admissible in court. Um, but, so, could you, could you explain what the change that was made as far as that goes?
I can try. Uh, I'm not, uh, so I'm not entirely certain. We did try to, to take the rules that were presented and prepare, prepare a, a track changes version.
Yeah, that was very helpful. Thank you.
I think, I think that the, the polygraph examination actually, uh, remains the same. I, I think that the language, and it may just be in a different location within the ordering of the rules now. So I, I think that the commission's rules state that it will, or, or may, the commission may, conduct a, a polygraph examination or direct that one be conducted, and that, uh, they will determine whether the applicants pass that examination.
Yeah, that's what seemed substantive to me, was like, it almost seemed like there was like a pass or fail before, and now it's like that they may, that word was, seemed like it was inserted, if I remember right. And, uh, that it seemed not like a strict requirement. But I don't know if that's a substantive change or not. It's kind of, again, I read it yesterday. Well, as it work.
Christine, do you, do you know if there was, was any discussion of that, or whether there, there may have been a change?
No change.
Okay, so thank you, Christine.
Well, and did I understand that we had suggested some additional changes to say that the police civil service commission would only be concerned with applicants passing or failing the written and physical test? And then other examinations would be at the discretion of, like, the city manager or the police chief for hiring? Um, and they rejected those? What was their reasoning behind rejecting that change?
I think that's, um, uh, I mean, I think that's a good description, counselor. With the, the, the commission president reached out to, to city staff and offered the opportunity to look at the rules since they were making changes and make suggestions on that. And, and one thing that the, the city was interested in doing was trying to, um, trying to help the rules track, uh, kind of the hiring process that people expect now, which is much shorter, really. This is, you could hear there are a lot of steps in that process, right? And so often it seems we lose applicants who may have signed up, but then by the time they, they come to the written examination, or by the time they, they go through these, uh, steps have, have found other employment or are no longer interested. So, um, we did suggest that the commission consider, um, some changes where those, uh, many parts of those, the parts other than the required written examination and physical agility test would be evaluated by the commission and, um, provided along with the eligibles list to the appointing officer, but not, um, not something that disqualifies someone from being eligible for hire. So what the, the new hire process under state law is that the, the commission does these evaluations and then certifies to the appointing officer, who's the city manager, a list of one to three eligible candidates for each opening. So the, that way there, uh, there potentially could be more eligible candidates, although they would have, they'd have information about all those evaluations conducted. I, I know that city management has, um, has experience with other processes, too, and other ideas for, um, for making that move a little faster. And, and Kim, if you wanted to talk about that, that's, that's certainly fine, but also something we can, um, we can go back and talk to the commission about. I don't know, um, specifically the rationale for, uh, for keeping the same rules in place at this point or not, though.
My concern is losing applicants, or maybe something, and I asked the police chief about this yesterday. Um, losing applicants over a very minor infraction that might show up on a background check that was, you know, ten years ago, and like, does that really disqualify them? And now we're leaving that in the hands of the civil service commission while we're down twenty officers and struggling for applicants. And I, I don't know. Seems to me like that should be, um, at least partially decided by the city, the city manager, the police chief, if that person is actually eligible or not.
Yeah, I, I agree with that, uh, uh, counselor. Over the years, I, I've experienced the process of, of moving applicants through the civil service testing process, and it's a, it's a very cumbersome process. And it gets bogged, it, it allows applications to get bogged down unnecessarily, in my mind. And one of the things that, uh, Mr. Simonton and I spoke about today is, is trying to help, uh, help the commission, uh, maybe, um, package some of those, those requirements. So, in, in other words, rather than making them sequential, making them so that they're part of, you come in and not only you're going to get polygraph, but you're going to get, and do the physical agility, and not wait for one to be completed before you move to the other. So there, we, we recognize, and we've recognized for, for a while, uh, the cumbersome nature of, of the process. And yet, because of civil service laws, there's, there's a lot of control, we, we, the city has, has little control over some of those processes. And so what we need to do is work with the, the good folks on the civil service committee, police civil service commission, to see if we can find an effective way of, of, of batching, I call it batching, those activities, so they can happen simultaneously, rather than sequentially.
Appreciate that.
Good question, Danielle. Good.
So at this point, um, I think we should move these rules forward and let you all work with civil service commission to see, uh, if they would consider ways to shorten the process.
Yes. Yes.
And leave that to you all to work with them.
I think that's a good idea. I think we need to look at the shortening the process.
Yeah. So, on the rules, we've already had a motion, as far as I know?
Yeah.
Yes, and now, if you would call the roll.
Yes. Deputy Mayor Bougan?
Yes.
Bill Kueke?
Yes.
Wheezy Michael?
Yes.
Danielle Tremble?
Yes.
Dave Harshbarger?
Yes.
Brian Butcher?
Yes.
Mayor Celine?
Yes. Passes unanimously. Now, we're on to consideration of approval of the Hazel Ruby McQuain Park Capital Construction Project. City manager?
Thank you, mayor. These are always exciting to bring to council. The city staff is continuing to create plans for improving the amphitheater area and expand that out to make it more functional for our community. You all received a copy of a memo from Mr. Kitch, our director of Culture and Arts and Culture, on September, the memo was written on September twenty seventh, attached with pictures of the proposed concept that they're, and if you look at those pictures, you'll see that the areas, there's a center aisle of steps, and then on each side of that, of those steps are bleachers. There's a section of dirt and mud there that is just really not only non-functional, but unsightly and creates havoc. And staff, and the other problem is you can't landscape it because it's underneath, underneath the covering. So, staff came up with a very, from my perspective, very creative use of that space. It's, it addresses, it can address handicap, those who are suffering from limitations as well as allowing an additional viewing platform area. The monies for this particular project, they don't come out of general fund. The Hazel Ruby McQuain Charitable Trust has been kind enough to provide the funds necessary to complete this. The memo that you received shows that there were six respondents to the RFP, and the lowest responsible bidder came out to be commercial builders at sixty-nine thousand nine hundred dollars base bid. It's engineering and the cultural arts have reviewed those and are recommending that the bids bid be awarded to commercial builders in that amount of sixty-nine nine hundred. And it's our recommendation that that occur.
All right.
Move to accept.
Thank you. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you. Are there any questions? Is that for both sides? The sixty-nine thousand will cover both sides?
You'll have two sets of platforms.
And what kind of timeline are they looking at? Will it be done by, you know, next summer?
Yes. It's not, it's not a major construction. They're going to have to do it before the freeze comes, but
Oh, so we can have it done?
But I think that by late spring next year, it'll be completed and ready to be used.
Great. Those places are awesome. When he first got here, he asked about, did anybody know any plants that could grow where there's basically no water? And there just aren't, even cactus, there's not that many. You wouldn't want cactus in a public space, anyway. All right. If you would, please call the roll.
Yes. Deputy Mayor Bougan?
Yes.
Bill Kueke?
Yes.
Wheezy Michael?
Yes.
Danielle Tremble?
Yes.
Dave Harshbarger?
Yes.
Brian Butcher?
Yes.
Mayor Celine?
Yes. Passes unanimously. That's a good one to go forward. And now, we have the city manager's report.
Thank you again, mayor. Couple of items that I wanted to update city council on. One is that there are pockets of areas within the city organization where it's really difficult to, it's been, it's proven very difficult to hire new staff. I can go through those pockets. One certainly is the police department, another is the airport and several others. Just wanted council to know that we have, staff has been very busy interviewing individuals. And especially in the key individual, I don't want to go into details in terms of specific positions, but I know there are several positions that you're particularly interested in. I can tell you that we are, we've had some great interviews with individuals, both internally and externally. And we're hoping to make hiring decisions within the next couple of weeks on several of those really key positions. The other thing I wanted to bring you up to speed on is the Ridgewood Project. I have a meeting with Mr. Rogerson in the morning. One of the areas, the primary focus of that meeting is going to be, as they move forward in this process, I told Mr. Rogerson today that we needed to make sure that council was brought up to speed on what's going on before it's presented to council for a vote, so that there's some discussion that can be had. And so, one of the things that we're working on, and I know that MAP is working on, is to create a presentation to city council where you can actually visualize what they're talking about in terms of height, in terms of other parameters. And that's something that I think that Mr. Rogerson, I fully agree on, that we want to make sure to bring those concepts in for city council for your input and approval before. It requires a formal approval by council. The last item, I just wanted to report that last Thursday, I had a really great meeting with Public Works at the garage. And I kind of stood around and just, they asked questions and we got feedback and we conversed, and it was a great meeting. And I just, I just want to express appreciation to all of our staff. I think we have exceptional employees. Our workforce is exceptional. And I think they try hard and they're committed. And as you speak to most of the members of the community, I think they would agree. I know that we had, I had a couple of residents camping at my doorstep a couple mornings ago wanting to talk about a paving issue. And so, I listened to them and assured them I'd get back with them that morning and went out to see, actually visualize what they were saying. And several of my staff had already been out there, talked to the contractor. It was resolved. And I had the privilege of being able to tell these residents that it's done, it's going to be done and taken care of. And that's what we expect, and certainly that's what a vast majority of our employees want also. That's all I have to report, mayor. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Report from the city clerk.
Thank you, mayor. I want to say thanks for the approval on the Police Civil Service Commission rules and regs. I know that the commissioners worked hard and they did work in collaboration with our city attorney to make those rules and regs more current. The last time they modified those rules and regs was in two thousand and twenty in that the only change was the driving requirement. So, I'm not sure how long ago, prior to twenty-two, prior to two thousand and twenty, those had been changed. So, it's been a long time, and I appreciate that, your questions. And I know that as Attorney Simonson stated, that the commission would be open to discussions of whatever you all may have. So, I talked about the Fire Civil Service Commission Open House, and I believe it was a success. It was this past weekend, and we did have twenty-some folks show up to the, to the open house. And how do I say this? It's a tough, it's a tough thing, that agility and folks can, folks, a lot of times, folks show up to the tests not knowing what to expect. But I wanted to share that on our website, if you search firefighter, it'll take you to their page and it'll kind of explain all of the, every aspect of the agility exam, what that skill that you, they would be doing, and what's the purpose of it. For example, the stair climb is very slow and you have weights on you, and that's to, you know, the purpose of it, carrying a hose up a stairwell and things like that. So, I think the open house was a success, and I know that they have discussed doing it again in the spring. And so, anyway, I wanted to give you an update on that. Tomorrow night, the Police Civil Service Commission will be holding promotional exams for one first sergeant and two sergeants. So, hopefully in a week or so, I'll have some congratulations to share with you all on those promotions. And then, again, lastly, on October twenty-eighth, the Police Civil Service Commission will be holding entry-level police officer exams, written and agility on that Saturday at nine AM. So, if folks have questions or would like to sign up, we're still taking applications. They can certainly reach out to the city clerk's office or find the information on our website and apply online. And that concludes my report.
Thank you. City attorney?
Thank you, mayor. Thanks to council members and our consultants at roadside Harwell for discussing the comprehensive plan tonight and changes proposed. We will work with them as well as development services staff to reflect those changes in the plan and the appendix documents, provide notification to the planning commission, and then move through council's second reading and adoption of the comprehensive plan so that you can then move forward to the zoning ordinance enactment part implementing those provisions. And likewise, on the Police Civil Service Commission rules, we can follow up with council members individually on questions asked and work with staff as well to communicate those requests and questions to the civil service commissioners who are also involved directly as needed and see if there are some additional changes that we can get back to council shortly. And that is all I have for the evening.
Thank you. Report from council members. Bill, would you like to start?
I really don't have much to report, but thank you, I will. I want to thank the people who were involved with the comprehensive plan who really took it to heart and contributed, so that was very good. And the green team was one of the groups, and I'm really appreciative for what they offered. On the Ridgewood Project, I think that that's been in process now for close to four years. And I know that there are architects involved in this. I'd really like to have a little more, and hearing that we may, a little more input as to what the vision is for that particular area. In other words, what can we expect with zoning changes? What can we expect to see? How can we implement it? I think, I think that sentiment is shared by other members of the council, too. I'm not opposed to what might be done, and I'm looking forward to some creative thinking, but I'd also like to see really what we're advocating for. Again, these structures are, they're going to be around for half a century, and if they're like my house, probably a more than a century. So, it's a commitment, and we want to make sure we make the right move. But I do appreciate the thoughtfulness that went into this. And also, a compliment to our attorney. When I asked him, you know, how and who contributed to the changes that we saw with our police board, he was very detailed and he touched all the bases. I mean, there were numbers of people. It wasn't somebody just simply getting their wish lists fulfilled. It was a collaboration and it seemed to me to be well thought out, and I do appreciate the exclamation. And that's it for me.
Thanks. Counselor Butcher?
Goodness gracious. Okay. Yeah, I also wanted to thank staff for putting together the comprehensive plan, like I had mentioned earlier. I think it's, it's a big task, and I'm glad that they could do it so thoughtfully and with kind of the goals that we've all had in mind. We had a Suncrest Neighborhood Association meeting, and there was a lot of people there. Probably over fifty, somewhere around, somewhere north of fifty. Thank you to Matt Cross for kind of leading that meeting. And sort of informally, Beth Ambosia for also sort of leading that meeting. I think it was, we had some really good conversation amongst the neighbors about Suncrest Primary School and what we'd like to see done with that space once the Board of Education tears it down. I think we spent a lot of that meeting trying to come to terms with that fact and having people come to terms with that fact. Somebody had a great idea of an outdoor monastery during the summertime, which I think is like beyond the scope of the kind of work that we do, but could be like a sort of long-term goal. It was just very, it was neat to hear a lot of the people's very innovative ideas when you get them all in a room. We had all, I guess today, one of the community members had stopped by and there was construction people there, and they just asked, when is the school going to be down? And they said the thirteenth, so in ten days, which is not as soon as we, we did not think it would be that soon, I think. I wasn't aware that it had even received a bid award yet, but that is what was said at the construction site at least. So, I say that to say, Jenny, we should probably get that letter together of things we may want to save and send it to the BOE as soon as we can.
We've been in the building and Matt's making the list.
Okay, good, good. A lot of people had talked about saving bricks and plaques, and maybe if we could save as much bricks as we can and sell them so that we could, or just build a sign for Suncrest out of it, which would be great, since we don't have a sign, and Woodburn has a really nice sign.
Wait till you see Greenmont's sign ending.
I was just going through my notes here about some of the stuff that we discussed. Oh, some of the trees, people had just expressed that they would like to see some of the older trees, nicer trees that are there saved, like inside of the actual park. And there are some.
They're trying to save all of them.
Nice trees there.
Even one that's right near the building, so we'll see how they do.
Yeah. Yeah. And so, it was great to have all of them together and a lot of the neighborhood kind of discussing that. And there was a lot of historical context that a lot of people could provide. That was, that was good to hear, too. The other thing I wanted to mention was I had attended the Human Rights Commission meeting, and he's our lone member of the public remaining. And we did have some concerns as a commission about the DEI report, which we, as a council, were supposed to receive, I believe, is it August or September, Committee of the Hall?
September.
September Committee of the Hall meeting, and we didn't as a council. So, I didn't know if, but that was part of the ordinance for the DEI plan. There's a few other things that I had found in the ordinance, and I guess the Human Rights Commission had as well, that we hadn't received. So, if we could get to work on that as soon as possible.
That's in the process.
Good, excellent. Thank you. And that's all I had to report. I think that was it. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you.
Along neighborhood signs, Councilor Trumbull and I were at the Greenmont Neighborhood Association meeting last night and they've got a really cool mock-up of what their proposed entry sign will look like.
They're trying to show me off.
It was really nice. It was a fun meeting too. It was nice, it's jeans. And a couple, just two rail trail updates. The Collins Ferry Connector, I know Mayor was able to be there today, was officially ribbon-cutted and opened. And so that is, and Councilor Trumbull was there too? Great, thank you. I could not make it, so appreciate you all representing us. Excited to have that section of the trail now officially open. And just another call out to the Century Ride, which is happening for rail trail fundraising from October 14th through the 22nd. If you go to montrails.org, you can get there and see how to donate. There's about 12 different people who will be raising funds that you can donate to for covering the entire distance of the rail trail in one day during that window of time. And again, that's montrails.org. And then lastly, there's a MUB meeting next week, Tuesday, if you have any items that you'd like me to bring to the meeting. And as an update, the Westover Long-Term Plan for incorporating that sewer system into the MUB system, it has to be approved, their long-term plan has to be approved by the DEP. And so that's a requirement placed by MUB on the city of Westover. The city of Westover is aware of that, so that is, that is the next step. That that plan needs to be produced and presented to the DEP for approval before things will continue to move forward. So that was sort of the higher level update from MUB. So that's all I have, Mayor.
Thank you.
First, a couple of upcoming events. On October 11th at 5:30, the Morgantown Police Department is hosting a Women in Policing Open House and inviting any females interested in potentially joining the police force or learning more about policing in general to the Training Center, the old Defense in Depth in Saberton. Again, that's October 11th, next Wednesday, 5:30 to 7:30. A couple of downtown events between now and our next meeting then. This Saturday, there will be the annual Morgantown Zombie Crawl in the evening. So if you like to dress up or if you just would like to watch, I believe that's at 6:30 and they'll walk down High Street. The evening of October 13th will be the Arts Walk and the afternoon of Saturday, October 14th, will be Hops on the Mon, which is also a Main Street event. So a couple of fun downtown, get in your outdoor things while fall is still nice. Speaking of weather, the cold weather shelter has made no progress. We had another meeting. There's still no organization or area that is intending to host a cold weather shelter. We have been working at H3 with Bartlett House. Their intention is to do everything within their power and I have a meeting with the Assistant City Manager and the Director of Bartlett House next week to discuss. Bartlett House intends to increase the capacity in their triage shelter by about 50% for the winter. So their normal 28-bed facility, they're looking at increasing to at least 40 beds. So that'll cover a portion of folks and we're still putting out some feelers for other spaces. I wanted to thank the city for replacing the lights on the Walnut Street Bridge.
They moved on.
It's been something that's been a real pet project of mine. I've been working with the folks in Greenmont for many months trying to make that happen. And I understand that there is still some discrepancy between who believes they are responsible for those, but I was happy to see the city step up and take responsibility for improving the public safety in that area even while we continue to try to iron out the details. It's a well-traveled bridge, especially at night. A lot of neighborhoods walk between there and downtown, so I was very happy, happy to see that, that Public Works did that and I wanted to thank them. I also should thank Public Works. I got a call today from a city employee, the library director, that she was driving through Greenmont and there was a dumpster in the middle of Brockway Avenue. So I said, Emily's out of town, Carol's off today. I called Damian in Public Works and he took care of it very quickly and he has plans. It was a Republic issue. My understanding is they picked up the dumpster that's already kind of on a hillside and partially in the sidewalk. And then they didn't secure it when they were done, so it rolled out into the street. And I just wanted to thank Director Davis for taking care of that and he has some plans to try to work with the property owner and with Republic to make sure that that's secured. Since Carol was out of town today, I'm sure she's going to be coming back tomorrow to several anger emails. Manager Hawes, the Woodburn neighborhood, for the parts of the Woodburn neighborhood, for the last two weeks have been missing their trash pickup and no one notified me last week, but I got many notifications today when it was missed for the second week in a row.
Is there any specific location Woodburn?
It's most of Harrison Street and apparently a lot of Lower Charles Avenue and parts of Ridgeway put their trash in the alley between those two streets and that area is not getting picked up either. One neighbor even said that her husband at 5:45 this morning stopped and talked to the trash men and said, "You didn't get our trash last week." And they said, "Oh, I know, we forgot it, but we'll get it this week, sorry about that." But then they still didn't get it. So parts of Woodburn have, the recycling has been picked up, but the trash has not. I've been getting a lot of reports from parts of Greenmont that their recycling has gone several weeks without being picked up. So clearly still having some issues. I've been telling people to message Carol. I don't know if they are or not. I sent her an email today, but I got an auto reply that she was out of the office. So hopefully, yeah, maybe I'll speak with her tomorrow and get some of those taken care of. But I think that was the only things that I had.
Good set of things.
Always trash things.
Yeah, I always wonder about like having data points or some things so that somebody knows that the route actually got accomplished. Like these did not have written routes. Now I think they have written routes, but it'd be good to have something that tracked it electronically that matched up with what the route was. But anyway.
Well, the things that I were going to talk about, Danielle handled for me. So the April 11th, I'm sorry, October 11th, Women's Day, the Women's.
Women in Policing?
Women in Policing. That was all I was going to talk about, so I'm done, I'm passed.
We had our neighborhood meeting this past Monday, yes. And we were talking, one of the things I'm going to point out and say thank you is the city and city manager Hawes for helping out again, is we're looking forward to shutting down Madigan Avenue this upcoming Halloween, which always makes our trick-or-treating safer and easier for our walkers, for those pushing strollers and as well as those that are in wheelchairs, just because it has more access and going house to house. With Municipal Week around the corner, I am excited to say that I have students that have volunteered to sit as the city council for the meeting. And we're going to start creating, rather, they are going to start creating their own ordinances this week to have them vote on. So next time that we're here, hopefully I'll have some good laws for them to vote for. And then lastly, on a personal note, October 14th at 1 o'clock at Morgantown High's Cafeteria, the wrestling team is hosting a Bingo Day, rather than night, to raise funds for the upcoming season, the installation of new padded walls and as well as adding a second weigh-in slash changing area for our girls team. Because what a lot of people don't know is that the state has finally officially recognized girls wrestling and now they're getting a chance to have a platform to showcase all of their hard work and talents, which I'm real excited for, for our upcoming season. And the good news is with Hops on the Mon being from three to seven and the Bingo being from one to three, there's no crisscross. You can go straight from the high school all the way to the Mon. So that's a win-win for everybody. And that is all I have.
I would like to mention a movie that is available tomorrow evening in the Gluck Theater in the Mountain Lair, so that's 10:04. At 7:30 p.m., there is a movie that's called Impossible Town, A West Virginia Story. And it's part of a set of premieres of this movie and it was offered up to our theater, but I think it was a better fit in the Gluck Theater because it's more of a small, smaller theater performance movie. But anyway, you can look online, Impossible Town, A West Virginia Story, and it'll show you a clip of the movie, you can see it's of interest to you. Definitely looks like an absorbing movie and so.
Time again?
Going to offer that up?
I'm sorry, Mayor, could you say the time again?
7:30.
Thank you.
Yeah. Yeah, it looked really interesting. It's a movie about some citizens who are, their town is badly polluted and they're trying to figure out, people are having huge health issues and they're trying to figure out if they could move it or what they can do with their town. So it's people taking action. I'd like to mark the passing of George Longnecker. He's a professor of landscape architecture and the founder of the West Virginia Botanic Garden, before it was called the West Virginia Botanic Garden. But it's, when I first came to town, there was a food co-op at the Episcopal Church with the red door up here and people would buy items, food items together and then we would meet and we would separate out the items. Maybe we'd buy in bulk, separate out the items and bring them home. This is thirty-seven years ago. But anyway, I met this man, George Longnecker, who was there dividing up food for his family and his wife Carol. But anyway, I said, "Well, Longnecker, that's an unusual name and I happen to be from Madison, Wisconsin and George is also from Madison, Wisconsin." And I had seen his name in the Arboretum there. His dad has a section of the Arboretum named after him. So it was kind of neat when he started working on this Botanic Garden project. And there was a point when he needed the first bit of insurance for the Botanic Garden. And he had a table, I think it was at the Marilla Center, he had a table there and he was trying to collect the last bit of money that he needed. And I asked him how much he needed and it was some odd figure, under $40, you know, 37 something or whatever. And that was the kind of donation at that point that I could make. So I have always felt very connected to him. He has a piece of property near the Wisconsin River that he goes to every summer and he has a house up near Snake Hill Road that's on Snake Hill Road that's built right back into the rock. He just is a person who has put in the time for his community with starting the Botanic Garden and has pruning workshops and just so many different things that he's done over time that have added tremendously to our community and just a creative, interesting guy. So anyway, it's good to mark such people's passing and that's what I'm wanting to do I do like this idea, as we're passing our comprehensive plan, of making it into an action plan as we move forward with more specific targets and doing it in a way where we're putting it together with a group or putting it together with a board or commission so that we are, if we're going to make some targets, we make sort of a comprehensive set of targets about a specific area. So I really appreciate all the work that went into that and I also wanted to say that I really look forward to Municipal Week and appreciate everyone and all their hard work. So thank you very much. And I think we might want to adjourn at this point.
Move to adjourn.
Move to second.
All right. We're done.